The Chair will now lay out House Bill 1505 and recognizes Representative Lucio to explain the bill.
Members, thank you for your services this morning, Monday morning, bright and fresh. I know everyone's excited to be here, as am I. I am -- will lay out 1505, which is an athletic fee bill for the University of Texas at Brownsville. With me today, I have Dr. Juliet Garcia, President of the University of Texas at Brownsville, Dr. Antonio Zavala, Vice President for External Affairs, Dr. Hilda Silva, UTB President for Student Affairs, and, excuse me, Mr. Dan Huntley, UTB Athletic Director, and Mr. Abraham Ponse, President of the UTB Student Government Association. If I can just share a brief history about the landscape of athletics in the city of Brownsville. Two important things have happened over the last three years that I think have engaged the community in sports. In 2004, one of our local 5A universities won the state soccer tournament for 5A high schools here in Texas, and so that really sparked our interest. I think they're the first 5A athletic high school team to win a state championship. So we were so proud of our local boys who did so well and made it through so many rounds of competition to get to the state tournament and then win. Well, lo and behold, 2006 comes around, and a different high school wins the 5A soccer state championship. So this has done a tremendous amount to engage our community in athletics. Currently, at the University of Texas, we have a women's volleyball team, a men's baseball team, and men's and women's golf. Currently, the funding mechanism for our athletic program is through the student services fees. Once the student services fees are collected, 37% are taken off the top for athletics. Well, with the university's plan to expand athletics, there was some concern by the student body and some desire to put out a referendum and to seek the support of the student body to add an athletic fee to their tuition bill. Well, a referendum was held and organized by the university's student body, student government, and was put out to a vote. The interesting thing about this vote is that 20% of the student body came out to vote for this particular referendum. As you know, that's twice the state average for student referendums. It passed with a 33% vote in favor of the athletic fee, which I believe will do so much for this university. Dr. Garcia has had an uphill battle, and Dr. Garcia's staff has had an uphill battle for many years, to give these students more than just the bare minimum. As a local university, we just wanted to give them enough to get their degree and get on with it. But that's no longer the case, and the students are demanding more, and I think they deserve more. And Dr. Garcia has done a tremendous amount of work to make that a reality. They would love an athletic department, an athletic system at the university, so that it can engage and retain students there locally, and also engage the community to go and visit games and attend games. You know, as a graduate of another university within the system, one of the reasons I constantly go back to my school is for athletic games, basketball games, football games, baseball games. I think this would do a tremendous amount of good for the alumni base and for the student body. It would allow them to have spirit groups, it would allow them to encourage students to stay beyond their class attendance for sports programs, for pep rallies, so on and so forth, and it would just bring a tremendous amount of school spirit. I would like, at this time, to ask for your favorable consideration and ask Abraham Ponse, with your permission, to testify about the referendum and the students' feelings on this particular issue.
The Chair will now recognize Abraham Ponse, who is here to testify for House Bill 1505, if you will just state your name and who you're with for the record.
My name is Abraham Ponse. I'm the President of the Student Government Association at the University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas Southmost College.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the committee, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning with you. And we, at Student Government Association, are very excited about this fee. We, like our representative mentioned, we did have a referendum in support, and I believe the number was 53%, that approved this fee. And it's not only about athletics, it's not only about creating a soccer program, which, by the way, I was reading the newspaper, and one of our other high schools is well on the way to the state championship. So soccer is a big thing where we come from. We're right on the border, and just how you see the soccer stadiums filled in Europe and in Mexico, it's just an amazing thing, soccer that is down in Brownsville. But the other thing, the most important thing, is that the money freed up from this fee, that 37% that is taken away from student services, will go back to students. That 37% will help increase our mentorship programs, our employment programs, our scholarship programs. We come from a very, very, very low-income area, myself being one of those students. 80% of our campus is on financial aid, and we have several programs, like our Imagine College, our Scorpion Scholar Program, that offer four years of tuition and fees for students who do well academically or also come from low-income families. Our other programs include our Scorpion Employment Initiative, which allows students to work 20 hours part-time on campus. That way, they don't have to worry about traveling off-campus to support themselves, and the employers on campus are flexible with their schedule. As well as our leadership and mentorship programs, a lot of our incoming freshmen go to these programs. This is all to have them assimilate with the university experience. So we are very excited about this program. We would like for you to favorably consider this bill. We've worked hard with our administration, and if you're on our campus, and I really invite anybody to attend, you can literally see it growing. There's construction that's going to be going on, starting this year and next year, that is just going to expand the campus. We're a very young campus. We're growing, and we're trying to put more aspects of an actual university into our campus. And the students felt the need for this, not only for athletics, not only to retain our student body and create that fan base, but also for more programs on our campus, more money for student life, for our Learning Assistance Center, for our disability service, for our career and counseling services. So we feel this is very important. We feel that this is needed, and we just want to let you know, the student body wants to let you know that it's not only about athletics, it's about all students, and this fee will impact positively all students on our campus.
Members, any questions for Mr. Ponse? Would you have this one?
Representative, I may need to reserve this question for someone else.
Sure.
But I had a -- we had received some correspondences. There had been a previous agreement with UTB officials not to increase student fees. I don't know, are you familiar with this agreement from the past?
I am not. If you like, I can bring someone from the university to discuss this.
I'm not familiar, of course, with the agreements. I was concerned about what kind of agreement there might have been or not. But thank you for your testimony. It sounds like that you did a fantastic job of getting voter turnout. As you mentioned, close to 20%, it's very impressive and certainly very appropriate for decisions of this nature, anytime you're increasing fees on any student. It's important to have a lot of students involved in the process.
Representative, I can share just a few facts with you. The university has put their best foot forward to make tuition affordable for local students and for all students. Just a few of the initiatives that they have put forward in the last few years. A few months ago, I read in the paper, it might be even less than that, a month ago, that if you qualify, you will have free tuition for your tenure at this university, for those who qualify, local students who, you know, are considered working-class and qualify under a certain income level. And that's great. So if you have the desire, you will be able to go to college. That's amazing. A few other initiatives are a flat tuition rate as of 2006, tuition discount for non-peak times, scholarships, campus jobs, and dual enrollment. I mean, they have done everything possible to encourage students to attend the university and to retain students, which is tough. Once you get them in the doors, that's one thing. To keep them there and have them go through the system in four or five years is a whole other monster to tackle, but they've done such a fantastic job. I can't tell you how quickly we're becoming a college town in Brownsville. So the university is one of the highlights of our local community and a place where people go to congregate and enjoy our community down there.
Thank you for that explanation. Now, are there other intended uses, other than intercollegiate athletics, or is this strictly for that?
No, this fee will be a lineatum fee on tuition bills that will strictly go and be earmarked for athletics, and which will, as Mr. Ponse said, free up 37% of the student services fee that is currently used for the athletic programs.
Members, any other questions at this time? Yes, Representative Wright, Chairman Wright.
Thank you, Representative Lucio, for your bill, and thank you, Mr. President, for being here. I had the opportunity to be on your campus this last spring, and Representative Oliva knows this, and has been a leader for many years on this university's campus and for this university now joined by Representative Lucio. You've got a very talented team representing you. One thing I learned on campus with Madam President and your talented team was how much the community has risen to support both Texas Southmost and UT Brownsville, and I think this represents a logical next step in that local community's support, to make not only UT Brownsville and Texas Southmost a great, a good university, but to make it a great university. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the bill. Thank you, Mr. President, for being here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Members, any other questions at this time? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ponse.
Thank you, ma'am.
The Chair will now recognize Daniel Huntley, who is here neutrally on House Bill 1505.
I'm just here as a resource witness.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I too am here as a resource witness.
Okay, thank you. And members, we also have Dr. Juliet Garcia, who is here as a resource witness, and Antonio Zavala, is that correct? Who is here as a resource witness also. Would you like for me to bring one of them or all of them up? I know that you have some other questions for the university system. Representative Patrick, would you like for me to bring one of these up? Would you like one of these resource witnesses to come and answer your questions?
Oh, yeah, if they don't have--
Whomever would like to come and be the resource. Dr. Garcia, you'll just state your name and who you're with for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Juliet Garcia, and I'm President of the University of Texas at Brownsville in partnership with Texas Southmost College. It's a pleasure to be here.
Representative Patrick.
Yes, we had received some correspondence. There had been an agreement not to increase student fees in the past, a past agreement not to increase them for the future. Was there a timeline on that, or is this just something with discussion? I just was trying to get the facts on that.
My understanding is that, on our campus, we've always hesitated to raise student fees. There's never a fee that doesn't come up without, with great consternation. That is the case with this one as well. But we have never made a fixed promise, that I know of, to not raise student fees ever again. I think it would not have made sense in this environment. The students, this is really the third time students have voted and had provocative discussion, and then made a decision to raise their own fees. The first was for a student union that they built several years ago. The second one is for a recreation center that is now under construction, and now it's the athletic fee. Students are very civically engaged, they have good forums for discussion, and obviously they have good voter turnout. And so the decisions, I think it falls to us to affirm, and that's what we're doing here today, simply to affirm the students' decision to go forward with the fee.
Well, thank you for that. I was just concerned if there had been some existing agreement for even one year, not necessarily for the entire, you know, future, but just something for the next year or anything like that. So I appreciate your explanation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Members, any other questions for Dr. Garcia? Would you have? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to testify for on our--
Chairman, I'd like to recognize--
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members. I rise here with a great deal of reluctance. In fact, I don't think I've ever done this before, and this is my 12th term in the Texas House of Representatives. I have done everything, any time, every time, my university has requested me to do something for it. I've been very proud to do so. There is a Dr. Anufo Oliva Library on that campus that I'm sure you saw, Representative Rose, and that's named after my uncle, who was a president, predated President Garcia, who just spoke with you. I have a cousin and law partner, who is a member of the College Board, that has merged with the university on a bill that I carried with Senator Lucio, my colleague's father, to create the University of Texas at Brownsville. And I could go on and on on the, perhaps hundreds of bills, that I've either co-authored or sponsored or carried for my university. In this particular instance, I was quite stunned when this bill was brought up. You have my oath, which I would give you even though I don't have to give you, that there was an agreement. There was an agreement with members of the staff, of the administration, and there was an agreement with certain board members, and I thought they all talked to each other. And perhaps even after all my years in public life, I was a little bit naive. But I expressed concern, actually in a meeting three or four years ago at the President's home, that I felt tuition and fees were getting too high. Now, we've all heard that battle cry already around our great state, and people are concerned. And some people are saying that deregulation of tuition has gone too far, just like we're finding out in regulated industries, where perhaps the deregulation of utilities may have gone too far. But as Chairman King says, it's hard to put the toothpaste back in the container once it's out. I do not take fault with my President, with my university, in any way. This is a respectful disagreement. They need money, and I know that. And they need money because frankly, we have failed in what we should be doing for higher education. I know all of you fight harder than anybody. I know Chairman Brown, too, as my former desk mate, fights as hard as he can in appropriations to make sure that our institutions get their fair share of state money, but they haven't been, and I think that's why we have to resort to fees that I believe respectfully are too high and unwise. I think you can call this a 10% tax. We did the mathematics on it, on what it would be per tuition hour, and on a full-time student and summer school, and it could amount as much as $200. Now, based on tuition, as I understand, increase. Which one of us today, there's only a handful, I think, can vote for a 10% tax increase on somebody we represent? That is not an easy thing to do. And I will tell you, I've always supported tax bills up here in Austin when it came to higher education, but I cannot support this bill that is a tax on students, many of whom which are poor, and parents, many of whom which are poor. Our university and our junior college, when they merged, they did this beautiful thing. They married basically both institutions into a 99-year deal with the University of Texas system. It was and still remains unique. Many want to copy it, but few have done so successfully. We have the best of both worlds, but we have a very unique student body. I want our university to become the University of Texas, just like everybody in Austin says. But we have a long way to go, and we have a very unique student body. We have a lot of single parents, people that are trying to maybe get a master's or maybe just get those last few hours for a degree, students older than average many times, people that are trying to come back to an institution because, well, if you get your master's now, you can make a little more money as a teacher. Or if you're in law enforcement, if you go get that degree, you might be able to get into administration. It's not your typical student body. I respectfully disagree with my President and dear friend. Dr. Garcia and I are neighbors. We have known each other literally since we were children. But there was an agreement, and I made it with them. And I was just foolish to think that they didn't all know about it. Now some of them claim to not know about it. It was not a perpetual agreement, Representative Patrick. I would not have been able to do that, because I'm not going to be here forever. I've been here probably too damn long, according to many of my colleagues. But, you know, as I go into my 22nd, 23rd year here, when I make an agreement with people that are in administration, and then I make an agreement with some board members, I think that's good enough, as you all would. I thought that we were going to slow down on this. The last fee bill, which came before you and which you all gladly helped me pass, and I was glad to pass, was for a student wellness center. And I saw that, that it benefited all the students, and reluctantly, I opposed it, but I supported it and carried it, but I said, "No more, please." I looked at the fees and compared them to other institutions, and I saw what we were doing, and for a poor university, I think we're way out of line, respectfully. And again, I don't blame the leaders of the institution at all. If we were doing our part, like we should be doing our part in public education and funding more of it, then maybe they wouldn't have to resort to fees. Now, I'm here because there were a lot of students that contacted me against the bill, and then I heard a lot of horror stories. One student who is in Iraq, apparently serving in the war, takes his classes online, as does my daughter, never sees the university. If so, it's just really to go pay their bill. Yet, they pay every fee that everybody has, whether they ever reach that campus, including the wellness center fee that we talked about, and they'll pay this athletics fee. And I just, I cannot in good conscience support that. I support athletics. I'm very proud of our university. The Scorpions have done well in so many areas, and I'm glad we're seeing an athletics program, and I believe in intramural athletics, and someday, I'd like our university to be able to do those things. But when you have so much unmet need, I don't see how you can turn to this kind of fee and promote it for this particular purpose. I believe in soccer. It has kept a lot of our kids out of trouble, the young kids. We have the biggest soccer leagues down there. Our high schools go to state championships in soccer, and I believe in all of that, let there be no doubt. But again, it's a matter of priorities, that the same priorities we have to make as decision-makers up here, can we have everything we want? And in this particular instance, I thought this fee was not only too high, but the particular purpose, I would have much rather seen a fee that went to strictly benefit the academic and research and things of the institution that I very much want to support, to go towards activities that would mean more job creation, which our area desperately needs. Again, if we were talking about what I argue is a 10% tax today, there would have been a much greater public outcry. We have received countless letters and emails in opposition to the fee, just when I stood out and shared my concerns. I'm not going to demagogue on this. These are people that I work with, that I have social relationships with. It's very difficult for me, and very difficult for me to be up here against my colleague and friend, Eddie Lucio III, on his bill. I'm not against him. Obviously, I'm against the bill. But also, he and I discussed this in December, and I asked him not to go forward with it. And he's chosen to go forward with it, and I respect his decision. And he's chosen to go forward with it, and I respect his decision. But the university, as far as I'm concerned, is in my district. Yes, there are students in his district, there are students in probably Mac Allen and Corpus Christi and elsewhere that come to this institution. But I don't carry bills in other people's districts. I would not go try to carry a bill that dealt with Texas State Junior Col-- I'm sorry, Texas State University there in Harlingen, which is in his district. I just try not to cross those lines. Normally, as a Valley delegation, we would all be in line, and we would have worked out our differences, but on this one, unfortunately, we could not. I was hoping the bill would just not be going forward. But since when I found out last week, that is why I sent you all the letter with a little bit of the information that we could hurriedly put together. If it's the committee's will to pass this bill, it is not a personal matter with me. I've told Juliet and Dr. Zavala and others that this isn't a personal thing, it's just a matter of what I think is good public policy at this time, and we're having, again, a respectful disagreement. But I don't think it's the right thing to do. Again, if this were a utility rate increase of this size, you'd probably have 100 lawyers here, and from fighting this on both sides and telling you what a bad idea it was. I do know that Dr. Garcia would admit that I have expressed concerns about fees, and I do know the other board members know that as well at the Texas Southmost College, that is part of the system. I also know that there was a way that they could do this without this bill. You can go to the University of Texas system and coordinate your fees and do what you need to do with them, and they can approve or disapprove fees, particularly now since there is a student vote. And that could have been done without legislation, and I'm still a little puzzled why we're going forward with legislation in the first place. I want to keep education in a price range for my students, and the argument in response to that is, well, many of them are on financial aid and aren't going to feel this. Well, that's just that much less financial aid that becomes available to some other student get into the institution. We are a thriving, growing institution, and we are, you know, bodies are coming in faster. You know, it's the old build it and they will come. And we have built a beautiful university with the support of many of you that I am addressing right now, and with Senator Lucio, and now with Representative Lucio. Again, I see it as a 10% tax. I'm not going to go into all the statistics about the poverty in our community. It's well-known about the Rio Grande Valley, but our per capita income is $9,269. That is our per capita income. You know, the state's is more than double that. So you're talking about, it may just seem like, you know, a couple hundred dollars, but we all know what that can mean to a student and to a family that's struggling to decide whether to put, to decide whether to put one or more of their children in college. We have a very high percentage of people living in poverty, and I've already mentioned that. There's a talk about some trade-off with these fees and how it would free up money for other things, and President Garcia and I have discussed that, and I think that has some merit. But the things that they want to do in this new program, for example, that concern me, again, I like, but they're not on the top of my, what do we call it, Fred, Article 8 wish list, how we used to make a list of the things that we wanted for our state and our schools. They want a radio station. I think that would be great, but that's not anything that we need to have. They want to have a student magazine. I think a student magazine would be great, again, but it's not newspaper. I just think that this fee is going to be used for a lot of other things. It's going to be used for some tutoring and for some career service work, according to the plan that I've been told, but I don't know that, how much of that is going to be and everything else. And putting, again, saying that our students, well, a slim majority voted for it, and therefore it should happen, I respect their decision, and I hope they respect mine to respectfully oppose this fee, because I do have a daughter there. I do know what the fees are. I've seen our fee catalog. I see what we charge, and I see that it's not done fairly and evenly, at least respectfully, again, in my opinion. I've sent you all packets. My staff prepared more paper for you, but I'm not going to give you more paper, because it's largely the same thing. Thank you for those of you who read it. It's, again, a very awkward and uncomfortable position for me to be here, and perhaps we've placed you in a very awkward and uncomfortable position. But I had to speak my point. I can't-- I can't, uh, be against something in my district and tell my constituents and the students that came to me and faculty members that came to me, um, fearfully, about why they thought this was a bad idea. And other community leaders came to me too and said it was a bad idea. It's just something that we, we might want to do in the near future. Uh, again, I respectfully contend there was an understanding. As a lawyer, I probably should have written a document, but I didn't. And it perhaps not every member of, of the administration or bor- every member of the board knew. But they did know my concerns because I expressed them openly and in social meetings. And I just, I can't let this fee go through without respectfully stating my opposition. And for that, members, I would ask you not to pass the bill. If, uh, there is a chance for some possible compromise, I'm certainly willing to dialogue about it. I don't know that there is. There hasn't been any real efforts towards that goal. There have been meetings, but nothing has been suggested, and the university has chosen to go forward, um, with the bill, and, and, and I respect that. This is a democratic process. I respect that completely. And again, there's absolutely nothing personal in it. It's just, I don't think it's good policy. And with that, Madam Chair, members, I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Members, any questions? Representative Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Renee, just, just for, just for your information, last week, uh, our education, um, Subcommittee Appropriations, uh, recommended that UT Brownsville, under all funds, receive a hundred and nineteen point one percent funding over, over the last biennium. So it's a dramatic increase. Uh, and, and a lot of it has to do with, 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 with fast growth, of course, but... Well, that's, that's fantastic, Mr. Chairman. And perhaps if that holds true, maybe, um, we can stop on all of these fees and maybe even have the blessing of, at least for a while, a, a moratorium on tuition increases. Because I know I, my district can't be the only area of concern, uh, in the state. But that's, and, and I know you'd be fighting for us, Mr. Chairman, and, um, just having sat by you and listened to your spirit and your concern about this, we're very lucky to have you there, and thank you for what you're doing for all the Valley universities and junior colleges.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Oliveta, you mentioned that there was another methodology for...
Yes. I didn't get to bring it this morning, and as some of you all know, I'm, I'm still recovering from my open-heart surgery. In fact, I usually am not functional at this time in the morning. I have a slurred speech because of some of the medications I take. We advised the university of, uh, a way out, if you will, to not bring this to the legislature. Fees, as I understand it, under section of law, can go to the system, whether it's the NM system or the University of Texas system. I think particularly once they've been approved by the student body. I wish I had the statute in front of me. A way that if they wanted to do this, they could, uh, work out a proposal, increase the fee. They would be increasing, I believe, the student services fee. It just wouldn't be called an athletic fee. But they could increase it proportionally, and then I think legally, there's no problem with doing that. And they could then divide up the, uh, uh, the money for this way they want to do it. And then we in the legislature would have nothing to do with it. And Senator Lucio and Representative Lucio and myself would not have been taking up your valuable time today. I don't know if their lawyers disagreed with us. I don't know if they felt, um, the one, only thing I heard about that suggestion was, "Well, the students haven't voted on this, and we think it should go to the legislature to decide." But I think that can still be done, and then I can respectfully oppose it, and we don't have to be worried about trying to put something into law. But that, that is there, as I understand it. We researched it carefully, and we checked with litge counsel, and there is a way to do it. The difference is, you may not be able to call it athletic fee anymore. You have to call it the student services fee raised, I believe, was the only distinction. But, uh, good lawyers assured us this vehicle was available.
Members, any other questions?
Thank you very much for your time, and, and appreciate you waiting for me, Madam Chair. I got here as fast as Austin traffic would allow it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Uh, Mr. Poncy, would you like to come back? And just state your name and who you're with for the record, please.
Hey, Brian Poncy. I just heard the representative's testimony, and as a student, um, let me just clarify things. First of all, our tuition at the University of Texas at Brownsville is one of the lowest tuition within UT system. This fee wouldn't take effect until 2008. As far as our distance education students, as student government president, this has been an issue on our campus. And we asked our administration to tell, uh, those in charge of distance education not to charge these certain fees to students because they are far away, or they're not in Brownsville, or they're over in Iraq fighting for our country. I know about the case, the situation with our stu-. Reason, we went to administration and we said, "Remove these fees from our distant education students." So this fee wouldn't apply to a student that is in Iraq or in another state. Coming from a low-income area, um, the, the representative mentioned our families tried to decide who's going to go to college. And in my family, my mom actually went first. I didn't. My mom was the one who decided to go back to college to get her bachelor's degree. And soon after, I followed. So we're very conscious, coming from an area, and, and maybe as college students, you'd understand more that when we try to extend a budget, we know how, how we're using our money. Representative Brown, I believe you said, um, earlier when this meeting started, that it should be a local issue. And the students have voted on this. Our students have turned out, uh, to vote for this. And the, the way I see it is that, and respectfully, um, you are elected officials. And, um, when a student body, or when a group of people, of people that put you in office, of course, you're going to try your best to represent them as well. Now, uh, whether we're in a certain district or not, I, your best to represent them as well. Now, uh, whether we're in a certain district or not, I shouldn't, it, it really shouldn't be an issue. We're all representatives. This is a democratic system, and I believe we all should represent, um, other people. I know, I believe there was another representative from Houston that would also support our bill or run with it. The other ten percent, in, this ten percent increase that our representative mentioned, uh, was interesting. I'm taking a senior seminar class in corrections. And our funny, uh, funny statistic our instructor brought up was that, um, a couple of years ago in Brownsville, the headline in our newspaper was, "Murders increased by a hundred percent in Brownsville." Well, the year previous to that, there was only two murders, and this year there was four. So you have to take also into consideration the ramifications of what exactly a ten percent increase will be. Like I said, um, the fees, tuition and fees is one of the lowest in UT system. Coming from a low-income family, we know how it is important. Now, in the past six years, how our president mentioned, we have gone to students, we have gone to the community, and both the students and the community have shown the support for our university. We have gone for the Student Union referendum. We have gone for the REC Center referendum. Our, we also passed a bond issue, and that was a sixty-eight million dollar bond issued that the community passed favorably. And all these issues, we've gone to, and we've tapped our city and our students because of the lack of funding that we don't have. We don't get money from Puff. We don't get money from any other source. We have to, this is what we have to resort to. And it's what we want. Our student body has decided. And, and I'll admit, I was reluctant at first when, um, we were thinking about this stuff when this was presented in our Senate. I'm not all sure about fees, and still not. But when the issue came down to offering more services to our students, not so much athletics, when it's, when this fee is going to free up thirty-seven percent, almost over a million dollars to go back to our student services fees, I thought that was important. I thought that's what it is that we need, that is going to serve our students. That's gonna, what, is gonna put that step forward in serving our student body, not just a select few. So I think it's just interesting, um, that such statistics were made, but, uh, none of these sta- statistics were made with students in mind. How many, um, from our representative's office went to our students and actually asked them what they wanted? Well, we came back, we have the numbers. We have the students. We're the voice. I always tell our advisors, you know, and I always tell our administration, we're, you're not, we're not your student government. You're our administration. And we're not his students. He's our representative, as well as Representative Lucio. So in, just trying to clarify everything, like I said, the fee will not take effect until 2008. This is a good thing for students. We need this. It is very needed. Calling it unwise would be calling the students who believe in our campus, who believe that our university needs to grow, unwise. And I don't think that's the case. So as a student, and only as a student, not as student government repres- uh, president, not as anything else, I believe in this fee. I wouldn't esate my administration on it. Our student government believes on it. Our student groups believe on it. Our athletes, our members from our mentoring programs, our students from our mentoring programs. There's people behind this. And we're coming to you, because that's what law states. We're coming to you for approval. Now, if there would be able to be settled locally, we'd have a lot more things, and I'm pretty sure of it. But we'd like to follow this. It's the students, not the administration pressing the hand on students. I'm not like that. I butt heads with our advisors all the time. But this is something that the students want. This is a student issue. That's why I'm here. The students have sent me to come and talk to you before you. So I really ask you to consider this, um, House bill.
Members, any questions? Representative Howard.
I appreciate your thoughtful articulation of your viewpoint. Very well spoken. I do have a couple of questions as a result of what you've just said, though, in terms of, um, when the fee would apply. I thought it was fall of 2007.
No, ma'am. Uh, one of the specific things we told students was...
Act applies then. Does that not mean, Madam Chair, that the fee begins then? Since 2007, and the...
We're asking for approval this year, ma'am, but the fee will be implemented until 2008.
Well, I think, I think we would have to clarify that in the legislation because the, the legislation says the act in, takes effect September first, 2007. But, uh, most likely, I would also say that probably fees and all are instituted, uh, prior to that, so this would not be eligible till the next year. But we probably would need to make that clarification.
Thank you. The, um, that was, uh, one thing I was looking at, and then, uh, oh, the other was, uh, in terms of distance learning students. There's nothing that I saw in the bill, unless I've overlooked something, that indicates that they wouldn't be charged. And again, I think it's good that you responded to that and went and talked with the administration about that. But I, again, I was looking for clarification about how we knew that that was going to actually be the case.
My personal guarantee, ma'am. If students are being overcharged or being charged where they're not supposed to, we'll know about it, and we'll do anything we can to rectify it.
Is that something, again, Madam Chair, that needs to be in the legislation? It's definitely something that can be added, yes.
Thank you.
Members, other questions? Representative Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so the average student, let's say the average student's taking fifteen hours a semester. They're going to pay an additional hundred and five dollars per semester for this fee?
Yes, sir. It's a seven dollar per credit hour.
What percentage of the, of the total student, student body, uh, is on the Texas Grant program?
I can't say for sure, uh, as far, the Texas Grant program, that's the...
The state grant.
The state grant.
Did we change the name of it again? It's, it's still Texas Grant. Yeah, it's still Texas Grant.
I, I really don't have that information, sir.
Because really, that, you know, if, if it's a large, could, could we get somebody from the university? Doctor, Madam President? Because if, if it's a large, if it's a large percentage, then the state is really paying for that. Because so go the fee, so goes Texas Grant, correct?
Dr. Garcia, if you'd just, uh, state your name and who you're with. Excuse me. Juvia Gatazia, President of UT Brownsville. Many of our students are on federal financial aid, and some of them receive also the benefit of Texas Grant. And those, um, those monies can go to tuition and fees, like they can in any other university in the state of Texas.
I, I understand that, but what I'm looking for is the percentage of students that are on Texas Grants.
It's actually, uh, the percentage of the total students that are on Pell Grant. I'm, I'm not trying to circumvent your question. I just don't know exactly the percentage that are on Texas Grant. On Pell Grant, it is about sixty-six percent. On Texas Grant, it would some, it would be somewhere below forty percent.
Forty percent.
Yes, sir.
So that really equates to what the state is going to pay through Texas Grants if, if we, if we approve this bill. Now, now my question is, what's the full amount that you're trying to raise per biennium? Can you tell me that?
It would be, I think it's about one point two million dollars that the fee would generate. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just, if forty percent of that's going to be paid by the state anyway, through Texas Grants, I'm just thinking, is, is there some other way that we can pay for the rest of this without having to go to the students? Because, you know, a hundred and five dollars a semester is, is quite a bit.
May I clarify?
Please.
I'm sorry. May I clarify the, um, the, the point that was made about there being another way to, to assess the fee by Representative Oliveta? What he was inferring, uh, was that we could simply include it as part of the student services fee without requesting additional permission from, from the state legislature. That is true. The students did not ask us to do that. They wanted a vote up or down as to whether or not our university would support athletics. They didn't want an annual decision by the Student Services Committee. So his recommendation, would it in fact assess the additional fee in the same way? It would have simply called it a student services fee. It would have generated the same amount of income as this would, the one point two million, but it would have been a local student decision on how to spend that money every year, as, as, as is for the student services fee. The students, every year, when they gathered for the Student Services Committee meeting, like all university students when they do this, to decide what their money would be spent for that year. It may be more counseling, student employment initiative, the kinds of things that were mentioned today. Every year, then, for the past, um, decade, they've had to take off thirty-seven percent off of that fee that would go to fund athletics. And this last year, they said, "It's time to decide whether or not we want that to happen year after year. Let's have a discussion about it campus-wide and decide whether athletics is something this university wants to maintain, and if so, expand." That's the very end, the impetus for the discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. This, this, this is what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, sir.
If forty percent of all your students are on Texas Grants, and you're trying to find, raise X number of dollars, is there some other way that we can fund that sixty percent that's not on Texas Grant? Because the fourteen, and, and keep in mind, you, you've probably already divvied up all this money, but we're raising you nineteen percent over the last biennium. You, I'm sure you know that.
Hi, I'm just having recommendations, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
If we give you that other nineteen percent, is there money in there that you could, that you could pay for this program for the next biennium?
The money that, that we're probably going to get out of the formula simply, simply pays us for the students that we've already taught, as you recall.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I understand that.
Yeah, I know you do.
But there's no, there's no additional money in there that you could do something?
Not when you have the pressing needs on our campus for many other operational items. Remember how, you know, our students, as, as, as was said earlier, we spend a very small per capita amount on students in our campus. We have the second lowest tuition in the UT system. It's always lowest or second lowest in the, in the system. So there's only so many pockets to, to go to. An additional money from the state of Texas for operations is likely not to make it through all of our democratic processes to be shunted over to athletics.
Yes, ma'am.
It's likely to go to other things.
Well, the, the, the forty percent that, of your students that are on Texas Grant, that's going to be an automatic. I mean, that, that will come, Texas Grant will follow that. If, if, if we were to approve this bill, then that additional seven dollars per semester credit hour is going to be followed automatically with Texas Grant, which decreases the total amount of Texas Grant money that we have for schools throughout the state of Texas.
And you know that there have been more students applying for Texas Grant that have actually been receiving it
Yes, ma'am.
over the last...
Well, we, we run out of money every biennium.
Right.
And that's a, and that's a, and then that's sad. And, and there's going to be a lot more money put in Texas Grant in this next biennium. And, and it's wonderful because it's doing exactly what we hoped it would do. You know, we want to give opportunities for students that would never be able to go to college if it wasn't for the state. So it's doing what it's supposed to do. But I'm, I'm just looking for alternate sources of financing on a program like this.
I understand.
And there may be an opportunity for Representative Lucio to go to the Chairman of Appropriations, even though our cutoff date was alr- has already passed, but we still might be able to get a rider in for Thursday night to help... might be able to get a rider in for Thursday night to help offset some of this. Because I think it's a great program. I'm totally behind it. I just have the same concern that a lot of people do about, are we putting too much burden on the students, especially when you talk about $7 per semester credit hour? Because that, you know, that does add up quickly.
Yes, sir. One of the programs I might mention that was mentioned earlier was a program that we just instituted called Imagine College. And that guarantees complete tuition and fees for any student with a family reporting $25,000 per year in annual income and Pell-eligible for four years. So every student that comes to our door today will not, that meets that criteria, family of $25,000 or less, is not going to be charged this fee. So we've taken care of that huge broth of students. We've also provided the tuition discounts we mentioned, we provided flat-rate tuition, and so, and jobs on campus that students are taking advantage of.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have a question, and you raised something, and this is, might be a little bit off-subject, but isn't there a proposal to make Texas Grant a loan?
A what?
A loan.
A loan?
No.
No.
Okay.
It's too important, no.
Members, other questions of Dr. Garcia? From Mr. Poncy?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. For anyone else who wishes to testify for, on, or against House Bill 1505? Hearing none, then I will recognize Representative Lucio to close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And members, you know, first off, let me thank Representative Oliveta for being here today. He has experienced some health issues, excuse me, and through prayer, he's able to have a speedy recovery and be here with us, and for his passion and dedication to public service, second to none in South Texas. And he is the senior delegate from the Rio Grande Valley, so I thank him for his leadership, for his mentorship over this adjustment program for me, and I'm glad he's here. It fills me with encouragement that our members down there are so passionate to be on top of every issue. I think what this comes down to is a difference in philosophy. The philosophy I touched on earlier between giving students what they need and giving students what they deserve. The bare minimum is no longer what we should be providing our students at this university. It's always been, just give them enough so they can get by and get out of school. But what happens? They get to school, they don't have any true experience, it's just a place where they go and they learn and they leave. They're not attracted to stay on campus. They don't have any programs to help them with mentorship, to help them with retention, to help them with job placement because of the lack of funding. So these students don't stay. They don't graduate, because there's not enough there to keep them there. What this will do for the university is, just like Mr. Poncy said, the student body president, is way beyond athletics. It frees up 30%, 37% of their student fee bill to be used for services like tutoring, mentorship, job placement, enhancement. But beyond that, I'm a firm believer in providing these children, these students, these young men and women, with a university experience that's second to none. And not just, let's just give them what they need to get by, but let's give them what they deserve. They've spoken, they wrote it in record numbers for this university, and twice that of other universities from around the state when it comes to referendums. And they want this. They want their university to be just like that of any other university. They want to feel proud about where they went to school. They want to come back as alumnus and attend soccer games and attend functions at the university and feel proud. You know, what, growing up, sometimes this university was a fallback for students because they couldn't leave, they couldn't go outside of their community to receive an education. This no longer is a university for fallbacks. This is a university that people want to attend. Well, let's make it that. Let's make it a university that they can be proud of. And this is a giant step in that direction. Something was said about the university not being in my geographic district, and I respectfully agree with that, it's not. But the impact is regional. And as a young man running in South Texas, one of the first things that I campaigned on was having a regional mentality. And I'll tell you, the reception of that thought was great. They want that. They don't want a Friday night football mentality of you against us, you're from there, I'm from here. I am for the South Texas region, and I'm here on behalf of my South Texas community, my Rio Grande Valley family, to ask you for favorable consideration of this bill. Just like Representative Oliveta has mentioned, it's a respectful disagreement between his philosophy and mine, the difference between need and what they deserve. And I truly believe that this is a giant step in what they deserve, but a small step. You know, like it was said, University of Texas is in line with the lowest of tuition-charging universities in the University of Texas system. You know, those of UT San Antonio and UT El Paso, because of their need, have had to increase their fees way beyond those of University of Texas at Brownsville and Pan American. If a student who has trouble with finances wants to receive an education at the University of Texas at Brownsville, they will receive one. They have done everything to ensure that, a variety of different initiatives, a variety of different initiatives, not only to get them in and help them pay, but to help them stay there. If they take up any credit hours above the 15 that they register for, there's no additional charge. If they have an annual income, I think Dr. Garcia said, of $25,000 or less as a family, they will not be charged a tuition. So this university has put its best foot forward. I believe in the university, and that's why I'm here. The students have spoken, and I respectfully ask for your favorable consideration. And I thank everyone for their testimony, whether for or against the bill of day, and I thank you for your service on this committee. It means a great deal to the future of our state.
Members, any questions? Representative Brown.
First, on your behalf, Eddie, because Representative Lucio is on our Appropriations Subcommittee for Regulatory, and he's one of the hardest-working freshman members I've ever met, and it's an honor to have you on there. And in addition to that, he garnered the nickname Joey. So if you all hear people calling him Joey, you'll know where that came from. Back on the bill, you know, I'm troubled by this, mainly because it says, "The student service fee is also used for programs such as student government, student employment initiative, tutoring services, counseling services, student activities." Things that are normally done on every campus without a fee. I mean, that's part of the job of the university. So it troubles me when I see those things that the university wants to charge for, especially when I see that we're giving them 119% of what we did for the last biennium. That's troubling to me. I mean, if it was for a new recreation center or something like that, I can understand that. But for this money to be going to things that are part of a campus life, part of an education for students, that's really troubling to me. Can you kind of address that?
Sure. I mean, there's several things that I've been told about and educated about over the last four or five months. One of them was the fact that we're not part of the PUFF Fund, which is, plays a tremendous role in funding several other of our university schools, our university system schools, both NM and UT. We, Governor, earlier this session, mentioned that he would be in favor of counseling or not renewing, so to speak, the South Texas Initiative, which would take away a third of the state-appropriated dollars to this university. This university does the best it can to get dollars where it can, because there is not a tremendous amount of permanent funding. But with that, I don't think that they should lay down their desire to enhance the community life there and make it a fully-functional university on every level, whether that's student life, whether that's job placement, whether that's new programs, doctoral degrees, master's degrees. Funding is an issue, absolutely. We're a young university that has no truly permanent funding source. And so this is an initiative they want to move forward with, and given the circumstances, this is the way they decided to fund it. Had the students not voted in this referendum to agree to this fee, chances are, it wouldn't be in front of you today. But I feel that until we change the way we fund our university systems and our higher education, we need to do the best we can to support the decision-making of our local universities with the support of their student bodies to increase fees. I understand that it's not directly related to some program that would be in classroom instruction, but what it would do for the university is amazing. In terms of retention, it's a big issue, big, big issue, enrollment and retention. It would keep people on campus. And statistics show that if you keep people on campus, the likelihood of them finishing is much greater. So it frees up 37% of the student fees that are already being charged, and it adds another permanent source for programs that I think are great. Our local athletes will be able to stay locally and compete for their communities, and so, I'm not sure that answers your question, but that's, my issues with the financing is this, there's not a lot of permanent funding out there.
Well, I'll work with you a little later.
I would appreciate that, Chairman, thank you.
Raise some extra money in appropriations for you.
It would be, it's very much deserved, and we'd be very grateful to you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Members, other...
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and committee members, for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Lucio. At this time, it is being voted here to leave House Bill 1505 as pending business. Are there any objections? Hearing none, it is so ordered.
Chair lays out House Bill 1187 and recognizes Chairman Morrison to explain the bill.
Thank you. Members, this is a bill, actually, that was before you, the members that are back on this committee last legislative session, that passed out of this committee.